I'm out of time, Western Union.
Yes, yes you are.
We appreciate it. Thank you for giving us the counsel. At this time, I am calling to meet in order. I do want to say that I'm proud to see the ones that are here. We thank you all so much for being here. We try to move it around, or we do move it around once a quarter in each district, so we happen to be in Councilwoman Carter's district this quarter. So we thank you all for coming out. The meeting is called to order at this time. I'd like to call on Pastor Platte to lead us with the invocation, as well as Councilwoman Carter to lead us. Stand and remain standing.
Thank you, Mayor Lowe. Let us present ourselves before the Creator with our heads and our hearts. Almighty God, thank you for the beauty and majesty you see in your creation today. Thank you for the opportunity to care for the world we have made. We ask that your blessing would rest on this gathering of city leadership today. That you would provide each council member and each department head with great vision and enthusiasm for their work. Please, Lord, bless the efforts of their hands, the bonds between Mayor Eddie Lowe, the council members Arthur Day, Dr. R. Greg Gordon, Steve Bailey, Vicki Cobb, the city manager Wallace Hunter. Please bless each of them and the influence of their work, not only here in Phoenix City, but also throughout the Russell County community and beyond. Lord God, as they plan and share together this evening, may you guide decisions they make by your Holy Spirit and lead them into all truth. I pray for the agendas that before us today, and lastly, merciful one, give an assurance for what will please you and will benefit those who live and around our beloved community. This we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good and right and true.
May it be so. I'll say it. Amen. Amen.
Just put the flag, salute, and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Platte. I know you have to leave. You could not be held against, and I promise you, this council, we still love you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilwoman Carter, for the pledge, leaving us with the pledge. At this time, would you give me a great pleasure to be able to call Chief, where is our chief? Starrett, along for this presentation that we're about to bring, along with also Officer Smith. I hope you all did. Teacher Wheaties.
We did.
And you, State.
If it's okay to the mayor and councilwoman, we're gonna kind of face it and handle it. So we talked to the folks that are watching from home, tell them about this event. We talked about it a little bit at the council yesterday with Ken Nelson, one of our school resource officers from school from South Gerard, does a tremendous job. Been with us over five years, but he's been very active in the community. Asked us to be a school resource officer, and we've just been really pleased with the job he's been down there. A lot of community outreach that he does on his own, on his own time. You know, when he was on the street, he was always the type of officer, if he saw kids out playing, playing ball, going to football, he was gonna stop, talk to them, throw a ball with them, find out what's going on, build that custom, the young folks in the community. So I appreciate the job he does. He went eager. Then we voted Captain here. Very, very good officer, just coming up quickly to the ranks, and very involved in a lot of our community outreach, such as Peyton Blue the last two years, that really done a great job organizing that. So we're proud to announce in July, we're gonna have a junior police officer academy for first. We're gonna have two sessions, gonna be a week long each, for first and second graders, July 15th through 19th. Then we're gonna have another session for first and second, so it'll be third through fifth graders, July 22nd through 26th. And we're gonna do that right here at the Central Activity Center. So what it is, is just another community outreach program to deal with young folks in the community. Show them a little bit of some of what we do, and obviously, in age-appropriate content, and talk about how we help the community, how we serve the community, and make this a safer place for all of us to live and enjoy, raise families. So and they're gonna talk, we're gonna have various different folks from our department, from criminal investigations, investigators, our SWAT team guys, our K-9 officers come out and just talk about their job and how that comes plays into a role of protecting the city. So, Caitlin, would you like to take them out?
I don't think so. I would just like to recognize Officer Ken Nelson. This was his idea. He brought it to me and asked about my help, and so I've been his assistant this whole time. And he kind of came with the idea because he's kind of hard for the kids in our community, and he wants to pour into them, and he made the point that these are our future leaders in our communities, and our future police officer future, for the council members. So he wanted to start pouring into them now. So it's been a pleasure. I'm honored working with him.
Well, I mean, I'm thankful to be able to serve the Phoenix City. And I appreciate you all for giving the opportunity to be able to serve. But I had the pleasure of going to some schools one day here after school and seeing Ken Nelson in action and participating, and getting me out of my comfort zone a little bit, and having a good time. He's good, and they're interacting with the children, and making it a lot of fun, and I know they're gonna have fun. We're gonna learn, we're gonna try to build on that for next year, and just try to continue to build and improve on that. So for folks that are interested, I think we have, we have ten of first and second graders, I think about fourteen have signed up. But we have thirty positions for each session. If you go to the city's Facebook, the city's Facebook page, or the city website, or the police department's website, there are links there that will take you to registration, give you all the information. So I appreciate Parks and Parks for helping us with this. And I'm gonna look forward to having a good time in July with my young people. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you all. Is it Captain Eager? Eager. All right, I'm sorry. I did not know you were going to be here, or I would've acknowledged you at the beginning. But congratulations, thanks for what you do. Thanks, Ken Nelson, for what you all do. And as I always say, you all be careful, I think. Thank you all for what you do.
Chief, before Ken Nelson leaves, I'd like to say something about him. Whether you're doing it or not, you already have, we've been waiting on that project. I was down at South Side Park one Saturday, and they had an event down there. He had about ten or twelve of young folks, you know, small kids. He told them, "Come, quote what they came for." It was four men named a paper badge. I thought that was something to see and something exciting. Those kids were excited receiving paper badges. He's done a great job.
Keep that heart. Keep the right heart. Proceeding on, council. At this time, on the city clerk, I'd like to ask this council for a motion for the approval of the regular scheduled meeting minutes for June the third work session, as well as June the fourth council meeting. And since we were all present, I want to ask at the pledge of you all that we take this in one motion. So at that time, I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of the June third work session, as well as June fourth council meeting. May I have a motion to approve? All right, we have a motion from Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Carter. Okay. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Is everybody comfortable out there? Y'all loosen up a little bit here. Proceeding on on the resolutions. First of all, are there any unfinished business that the council needs to discuss? Since there's not any, we'll proceed on with the resolutions and on administration. We have resolution number 2024-113 to be ratified in reference to authorize the mayor and city manager to hire War Grading Contractor Inc. to rebuild excess road and repair sanitary sewer main between Eighteenth Avenue and U.S. Highway 280. At this time, I would like to call on the clerk for the reading of this resolution. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas emergency work is required on a portion of sanitary sewer main between Eighteenth Avenue and U.S. Highway 280. And whereas the excess road to said main was damaged by erosion and needs to be rebuilt to allow repairs to said main. And whereas it is necessary that this work be performed as expeditiously as possible to ensure public safety and stop a sanitary sewer leak. And whereas War Grading Contractor, Inc. was hired to rebuild said excess road and repair said sanitary sewer main, and submitted an initial estimate for this required emergency work in the amount of $95,075. And whereas War Grading Contractor, Inc. completed the work and submitted an invoice in the amount of $70,559. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby declare the Eighteenth Avenue sanitary sewer main repair, and emergency, and authorizes and directs the mayor and city manager to hire War Grading Contractor, Inc. to rebuild said excess road and repair said sanitary sewer main in an amount not to exceed $70,559. Passed, approved, and adopted this twelfth day of June 2024, ratified this eighteenth day of June 2024.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Davis, for the reading of the resolution. Council, we have all heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask this council for a motion to ratify, please. May I have a motion? Of the ratifying. All right, we have the motion from Councilman Gordon. May I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Carter. Any comments or discussion, council? Right? Not called for the vote. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, council, on the building department. We have two resolutions and public notices in reference to setting public hearing dates and fixing demolition costs associated with the following properties located in Phoenix City. The first one is 1424 Tenth Avenue. Second one is 1215 Twentieth Street. So at this time, I'd like to call on the clerk to read one master resolution in public notice. At this time, Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, has been informed by the building official of the city that substandard structures at the following locations in Phoenix City were in need of demolition or removal. One, 1424 Tenth Avenue. Two, 1215 Twentieth Street. Whereas the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, has solicited sale bids as required by Alabama law, and the apparent low bidders meeting the specifications required for the demolition of the substandard structures are as follows. The amount listed below includes dumping fees. One, 1424 Tenth Avenue, great southern furniture and home remodeling, $8,800. Two, 1215 Twentieth Street, great southern furniture and home remodeling, $4,800. Whereas the city is required by law to give notice by certified or registered mail to the person that last assessed or at the norm taxes before the final fixing of cost, and a copy of the resolution is to be published in the Citizen of East Alabama, a newspaper of local and general publication in Russell County, Alabama. And whereas the building official of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, was authorized to proceed with the demolition and/or removal of the substandard structure with the apparent low bidder at the approved bid price. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, as follows. One, that the city clerk can give notice by certified or registered mail to the person last assessed or at the norm taxes, and a copy of this resolution be published in the Citizen of East Alabama newspaper one time before the final fixing of cost and establishment of a special assessment upon the property as required by law. Two, that the date for fixing of cost before the city council shall be July 16th, 2024, at nine o'clock a.m. in the council chambers of the Public Safety Building. Three, that at such public hearing, any person interested in this property, as little as the person last assessed or at the norm taxes, should appear and give reason, if any, while the city council should not establish a special assessment upon the property for the cost of the demolition or removal of a substandard structure which the owner of the property had either failed or refused to do after it had become a public danger or health hazard. Four, the cost of demolition for each structure, at least as listed above, shall be levied against each property as a special assessment and shall constitute a lien against the property to be collected through the Revenue Commissioner's office for Russell County, Alabama. The council notes that the parcel identification number for each property is listed on the public notice and the individual resolution for each property. Five, that the property owner as shown on the tax records of Russell County, Alabama, for each property is as follows. One, 1424 Tenth Avenue, Francis M. Goldman, 1507 Ninth Avenue, Alabama, Phoenix City, Alabama, 36867. Two, 1215 Twentieth Street, Delores Blanco, 16 Clear Creek, Fort Mitchell, Alabama, 36857. I'm sorry, 36856. Passed, approved, and adopted this eighteenth day of June 2024. The public notice reads as follows. Notice is hereby, notice is hereby given that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, will meet on July 16th, 2024, at nine o'clock a.m. Eastern Standard Time in the council chambers, 1111 Broad Street, to consider the fixing of cost incurred by the city of Phoenix City for the demolition and/or removal of substandard buildings or structures at the following locations. One, 1424 Tenth Avenue. Two, 1215 Twentieth Street. Legal description is as listed on individual public notice for that property. Any person, firm, or corporation having any interest in the above described property should appear before council at the aforementioned time and place if they have any objections as to why the fixing of cost for the removal of the substandard building or structure should not be assessed as a lien against the property taxes upon which the substandard building or structure was located, this eighteenth day of June 2024.
Can I get a little warning? Thank you so much, council. We've all heard the reading of the master resolution, as well as the public notice. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay, may I have a motion from Councilman Day? May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordon. Council, any comments or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on on the engineering department. We have a resolution in reference to releasing the standing bonds and accepting the public infrastructure right of way in easements dedicated by the subdivision known as La Dounia Commercial. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the city council of the city of Phoenix City accepted all public infrastructure rights of ways and easements dedicated by the final plan of the subdivision known as La Dounia Commercial for the warranty period on October 20th, 2020. And whereas the warranty period for maintenance of the public infrastructure by the developer has expired, and city staff has completed its final inspection and approval. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby release the standing bonds and accepts the public infrastructure rights of ways and easements as dedicated by the subdivision known as La Dounia Commercial. Passed, approved, and adopted this eighteenth day of June 2024.
Okay, thank you again so much, council. We've heard the resolution. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
I got a motion from Councilwoman Carter, and that's the second. Councilman Day? All right, we have the motion, then we have the second. It's time, any comments or discussion?
I guess, Mayor, excuse me, yesterday, I know I need to elaborate on that. There's two easement, and those easements allow to go in and work on the city infrastructure.
Yes, sir, there are a lot of energy easements and utility easements that will allow the city to go in and work on the infrastructure that we have. And also, this plaque is accepting the roads for maintenance also. So they had the final plan approved back in 2020. They went through their warranty period, went through the two-year warranty period, plus in the initial times they put down for like an asphalt extension. They installed all of, they spread all their asphalt, and they've done that, and they reached the final inspection status factor to a... So this would be the city accepting the maintenance of those streets and roads and utilities and everything in that area.
Can I ask, I guess it's a city question, how wide the easement normally is?
Normally, they're twenty feet. If there's some region where we have deeper infrastructure, we may have to get our wide. But normally, it's twenty feet, but every season's different.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Angel. Any other comments on this discussion, questions? If not, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Also proceeding on on the engineering department. We have a resolution in reference to accepting the dedication of public utilities easements dedicated by the final plan of the subdivision known as Phoenix City Retail Development, Lindstrom and Company, LLC. Owner, Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the Phoenix City Planning Commission has determined that it is in the best interest of the city to accept the dedication of public utilities easements dedicated by the final plan for the subdivision known as Phoenix City Retail Development, located in sections four and five, T-17-N-R-30-E, Phoenix City, Russell County, Alabama, dated May 2nd, 2024, prepared by Mitchell E. Lowery, registered land surveyor. And whereas the owner of said property, Lindstrom and Company, LLC, desired to dedicate the same to the city of Phoenix City. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby accept the dedication of public utilities and easements as shown on the above referenced final plan for the subdivision known as Phoenix City Retail Development, Lindstrom and Company, LLC. Owner, passed, approved, and adopted this eighteenth day of June 2024.
Thank you for that reading of the resolution, which the council, we have all heard. At this time, I would like to ask this council for a motion, please. Motion to approve. All right, we have a motion from Councilman Gordon. May I have a second? May I have a second, council?
Second, Mayor.
All right, we have a second from Councilwoman Carter. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
And Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Also on the engineering department. We have a resolution in reference to authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to accept a quote from Martin Creek, LLC, for the purchase of necessary stream credits to connect the existing landfill and the landfill expansion in an amount not to exceed $3,312. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the existing landfill and the landfill expansion are separated by a stream that inhibits access between the sites. And whereas the city of Phoenix City has a plan to construct a stream crossing to connect the site, which requires the approval from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, who are requiring the city to purchase 0.002 acre of stream credits from an approved mitigation bank to offset the impacts of the stream. And whereas Martin Creek, LLC, has provided a quote for the necessary stream credits in an amount not to exceed $3,312. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to accept the quote from Martin Creek, LLC, for the purchase of the necessary stream credits to connect the existing landfill and the landfill expansion in an amount not to exceed $3,312. Passed, approved, and adopted this eighteenth day of June 2024.
Thank you again for the reading of the resolution, council. We've heard it. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordon. Any comments or discussion? Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And also, council, on the engineering department. There's a resolution in reference to authorize and direct the mayor to sign a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Transportation for the safe streets and roads for all grant funding program. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, was awarded $250,000 in funding from the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Funding Program administered by the U.S. Department of Transportation. And whereas the funding will be utilized to engage a consultant to perform a safety action plan, which will be used to identify and address safety concerns for Phoenix City's entire road network in aid in obtaining grant funding or capital improvements based on said plan. And whereas Phoenix City will contribute a 20% match equating to $50,000. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize and direct the mayor to sign the grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Transportation for the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Funding Program. Passed, approved, and adopted this eighteenth day of June 2024.
Thank you. So blessed, Mrs. Davis. That is $200,000 instead of $250,000. Two fifty, two fifty, we're about, but on the reading of that. Yeah, reading. Okay, so council, we've heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask this council for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Carter. Any comments or discussion?
We've come in, if I may, Mayor. We're excited, and we know that this will help out in our community. So if we could just have someone explain just a little bit more on how impactful it could be for Phoenix City.
Yes, ma'am, this is the new grant for some of the new funding that's come out of the Federal Highway Administration. So there were women cities to go in and look at all of their streets based off of tri-activity and places, you know, you roll over and everything like that. So they could study our streets to see where we have our major impact at, and what areas that we can go in and possibly do construction work to help those areas. But what we need is, we've got to have a plan first, so this will pay, you know, help pay for that plan. And then by that point, we could go back in and without our studies, we could go back and apply for additional grant funding to get some of those projects funded. But if we don't have this plan in place, then we're not allowed to probably go and get anything from those other federal grants. So it's a good thing it's citywide, it's good for all cities. We'll have something, you know, saying that because we're studying our area. We know where our areas are, and that we all have better guides where we need to budget capital projects.
We appreciate it.
So I would, you understand that these dollars have to do the study, is that right?
Yes, so this is seriously worth the study.
Okay, the money, you left over, the money left over, use it to that, to the street, you know, for the street.
I'm hoping after we get this plan approved, that other money will be released that you can get some additional construction funds for. But by us having this plan in place, that means we are eligible to apply for those additional funding.
And notice he said citywide.
Yeah, citywide, yeah.
Thank you. That's important. He ate two steaks today, didn't he? Thank you. We appreciate it. Any other comments to discuss? If not, let's call for the vote. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, council, on the finance department. We have a resolution in reference to rescind resolution 2023-100 in reference to authorize the mayor and city manager to enter into a 36-month lease agreement with Best Copy Products, Inc. for a Sharp BP-70C55 network digital color copier in an amount of $195.45 per month. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas in resolution 2023-100, the city council authorized the mayor and city manager to sign a lease agreement with Best Copy Products, Inc. to lease one Sharp BP-70C55 network digital color copier for the finance department in order to replace the current copier system, Sharp MX-5070V. And whereas the proposed price for Best Copy Products, Inc. for one Sharp BP-70C55 network digital color copier for a monthly lease slash rental fee of $195.45 plus applicable fees, total payout of $7,036.20 plus applicable fees, was provided in error by the vendor. And whereas the city has received a correct price from Best Copy Products, Inc. for the Sharp BP-70C55 network digital color copier for a monthly lease slash rental agreement. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby rescind resolution 2023-100. Passed, approved, and adopted this eighteenth day of June 2024.
Thank you again, Mrs. Davis, for reading the resolution. Council, we've all heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask the council for a motion.
Motion to approve.
I got a motion from Councilman Gordon. Second, Councilman Day?
Right.
We have that, Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Comments or discussion? All right, it's time to call for the vote. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also, council, on the finance department. There's a resolution in reference to authorize the mayor and city manager to enter into a 36-month lease agreement with Best Copy Products, Inc. for a Sharp BP-70C55 network digital color copier in an amount of $199.18 per month. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the city of Phoenix City Finance Department needs to replace the current copier system, Sharp MX-5070V. And whereas the city has received a proposal from Best Copy Products, Inc. And whereas the city has received a proposal from Best Copy Products Inc. for one Sharp BP dash seven zero C five five network digital color copier for a monthly lease slash rental fee of one hundred ninety-nine dollars and eighteen cents plus applicable fees, total payout of seven thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars and forty-eight cents plus applicable fees on state contract number one four zero six zero three dash AL zero six for a term of thirty-six months. And whereas the Finance Department will return the current copier, Sharp MX dash five zero seven zero V network digital color copier, to Best Copy Products Inc. when the replacement copier is delivered. And whereas the city finds the lease to be a necessity for the day-to-day operations of city business. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize the mayor and city manager to enter into a lease agreement with Best Copy Products Inc. to lease one Sharp BP dash seven zero C five five network digital color copier. Passed approved and adopted this eighteenth day of June, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you again for that. Mrs. Davis, council, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilwoman Carter, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Gordon. Comments or discussion? Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the city of Phoenix, I'm sorry. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
It happens. Trust me, it happens. Next, council on the Library Area Department, there's a resolution in reference to authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to accept a quote from Harrington to paint the interior walls and trim work of the Phoenix City, Roswell County Library in an amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the city of Phoenix City is proposing to paint the interior walls and trim work of the Phoenix City, Roswell County Library. And whereas the city of Phoenix City has solicited quotes for said painting. And whereas the city of Phoenix City receives three quotes to paint the Phoenix City, Roswell County Library with Harrington Paint Company being the lowest responsible proposal in an amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to accept the quote from Harrington Paint Company to paint the interior walls and trim work of the Phoenix City, Roswell County Library in an amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars. Passed approved and adopted this eighteenth day of June, two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay, thank you again, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've heard the resolution. May I ask the council for a motion please? Motion to approve. All right, we have a motion from Councilman Day, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Gordon. Any comments or discussion, council?
Yeah. Sorry. I was just gonna ask, would this close the library anytime for the painting, for any period of time?
Not sure at this time.
Okay.
Not sure at this time. Both Harrington paintings, there's a comment that says he was doing in the park in different states.
Right. Okay.
Any other comments or discussion? All right, at this time, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, council on the Parks and Recreation Department, there's a resolution in reference to authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to sign and enter into a contract agreement with William Morris Endeavor Entertainment LLC for Ricky's Gags and Kentucky Thunder to perform at the Phoenix City Amphitheater on July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the city of Phoenix City desires to provide quality entertainment for its citizens. And whereas the city of Phoenix City would like to enter into a contract with William Morris Endeavor Entertainment LLC for Ricky's Gags and Kentucky Thunder to perform at the Phoenix City Amphitheater July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. And whereas the city of Phoenix City agrees to pay a total of thirty thousand dollars, split into two equal parts, with the first to be paid upfront as a deposit and the other to be paid to the band at sound check. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to sign and enter into a contract agreement with William Morris Endeavor Entertainment LLC for Ricky's Gags and Kentucky Thunder to perform at the Phoenix City Amphitheater on July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. Passed approved and adopted this eighteenth day of June, two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask this council for a motion to approve. And we have a motion from Councilman Gordon, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Day? You have that, Mrs. Davis?
Yes, sir.
Gordon and Day? Okay. Any comments or discussion, council? All right, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, on the Parks and Recreation Department, there's a resolution in reference to authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to sign and enter into a contract agreement with Power Technical Fireworks Incorporated by fireworks displays displayed at the Phoenix City Amphitheater on December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four in an amount not to exceed sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the city of Phoenix City desires to provide quality entertainment for its citizens. And whereas the city of Phoenix City would like to enter into a contract with Power Technical Fireworks Inc. for a fireworks display at the Phoenix City Amphitheater on December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. And whereas the city of Phoenix City agrees to pay a total of sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars, split into two equal parts, with the first to be paid upfront as a deposit and the other to be paid to the vendor date of show. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to sign and enter into a contract agreement with Power Technical Fireworks Inc. for a fireworks display at the Phoenix City Amphitheater on December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four in an amount not to exceed sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Passed approved and adopted this eighteenth day of June, two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay, thank you again so very much. Council, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask the council for a motion please. Motion to approve. All right, we have a motion from Councilman Day, may I have a second? Second, Councilwoman Gordon. Okay. Comments or discussion? All right, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, council proceeding on, on the ordinance. This is a first reading. It's the letter of recommendation from the Planning Commission, public notice and ordinance to rezonate thirty point three six plus minus acres of land located at three hundred Collin Power Parkway from an R-two zone medium density residential district to an M-one zone general manufacturing district. Sierra Pacific Industries Incorporated is the owner. At this time, I'd like to ask the clerk to read the resolution, the ordinance, reading of the, the ordinance for the reading of the letter, public notice as well as the ordinance. Mrs. Davis?
Letter from the Phoenix City Planning Commission reads as follows. The Planning Commission of the city of Phoenix City met on Tuesday, June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four to consider the request of Sierra Pacific Industry Inc., owner for thirty point thirty-six plus slash minus acres located at three hundred Collin Power Parkway to be rezoned from R-two zone medium density residential district to a M-one zone general manufacturing district. It is in the recommendation of the Planning Commission that this request for a rezonate be approved by city council. Sincerely, Billy Sims, Chairman, Phoenix City Planning Commission, Eliza Phillips Wyatt, Secretary, Phoenix City Planning Commission. The public notice and ordinance reads as follows. Notice is hereby given that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, in response to a request made by the Planning Commission of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, will meet on the sixth day of August, two thousand and twenty-four at nine o'clock, eight AM Eastern Standard Time, at the city council chambers, Public Safety Building at eleven eleven Broad Street, Phoenix City, Alabama, to consider the following amendment to the zoning of ordinance of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama. An ordinance, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Phoenix City. Section one, that the zoning ordinance of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, adopted on the seventeenth day of September, two thousand and two, be amended so that the following tract of land be located in an M-one zone general manufacturing district instead of an R-two zone medium density residential district. Property is thirty point thirty-six plus slash minus acres located at three hundred Collin Power Parkway, Sierra Pacific Industry Inc., owner. Legal description for the map accompaniment to petition to rezonate for Sierra Pacific Industries Inc. All that certain tract or parcel of land located in sections twenty-three and twenty-six, Township seventeen, seventeen north, range thirty east, Phoenix City, Roswell County, Alabama, containing thirty point thirty-six acres and being more particularly described as follows. At said meeting, all persons desiring to be heard concerning the rezoning of above, of the above described property may appear before the council at the aforementioned time and place to be heard, passed approved and adopted this eighteenth day of June, two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've all heard the first reading. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, one motion please for the approval of the letter accepting of the vote notice as well as the place of first reading, the ordinance of first reading. May I have a motion please? Motion to approve, all right. We have a motion from Councilman Day, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Carter. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes. Also, council proceeding on to license application. This is also a first reading. It is an application for an on-premise beer license, on-premise wine license, and on-premise whiskey wine license submitted by Annie M. Robinson, doing business as Annie Mae's Lounge Lounge Bar and Grill located at nine hundred Knoll Road, Phoenix City, Alabama. Mrs. Davis?
I have three letters. First letter coming from the Police Department, Chief George Doniger states, reference Annie Mary Robinson, Annie Mae's Lounge Bar and Grill, nine hundred Knoll Road, Phoenix City, Alabama, three six eight six nine. I have reviewed the applications for on-premise beer, on-premise wine, on-premise whiskey wine licenses, and I have no objection to the issuance of these licenses to the applicant based upon her criminal background investigation. Second letter coming from the Fire Chief, Kristen Kennedy. This letter is in reference to the application submitted by Annie M. Robinson, doing business at Annie Mae's Lounge Bar and Grill located at nine hundred Knoll Road, Phoenix City, Alabama, three six eight six seven. This applicant has applied for on-premise beer, on-premise wine, and whiskey wine licenses. A final inspection has been conducted and the building meets the fire code requirements for this type occupancy. Third letter coming from our chief building official, Ray Rogers. This letter is in reference to the application submitted by Annie M. Robinson of Annie Mae's Lounge Bar and Grill located at nine hundred Knoll Road for an on-premise beer, on-premise wine, and whiskey wine license. This facility was inspected on May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four and meets the minimum building code requirements. This office has no objections to the approval of these licenses. And that concludes the three letters.
Thank you for that first reading, council, which we've all heard. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion from the council based on first reading. Motion to approve. All right, motion, Councilman Day, we got a second, that Councilman Gordon. Comments or discussion? All right, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time? We've been ten, I was looking at the generator. Oh, there you are. You say I got these glasses off, man. I'm looking back there. I'm always reporting that chain. I'm sorry, Jim. I don't know how I miss you. Yes, I do.
Yeah, I know, I'm not easy to miss. We have four claims on the agenda tonight. Three of them originate from the same incident. We have a notice of claim filed by Cynthia Patrick, a notice of claim filed by Cynthia Patrick on behalf of a minor, Javon James, a notice of claim filed by Cynthia Patrick on behalf of deceased minor, Devin James. These were supported by the Cochran Firm and she was sitting on Highway one sixty-five at the intersection of Sundown Drive and Miller Road where there is no turn lane, waiting to turn into a gas station when a pickup truck on fifty-five miles an hour hit the rear end of a car and I think totaled the car. Her claim against us is that there is not a turn lane. You've got your affidavit from Chief Doniger where he states that the roadway where the crash occurred belongs to the state of Alabama and is maintained by the Alabama Department for transportation out. Based on that information, I would recommend that we deny all three of these claims.
Thank you, Mrs. Grant.
Yes, sir.
Council, we've heard the recommendation from our attorney, I ask for a motion to approve of this reference index. A motion to approve. We have a motion, Councilman Day, may I have a second? Second, second, Councilwoman Gordon. Okay. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the fourth claim is a subrogation claim filed by Gaco on behalf of Indira D. They did not submit pre-estimates as our policy. And based on that, I will, I recommend that we deny the claim.
Okay, thank you again, Mrs. Grant.
Yes, sir.
We've heard the recommendation from our attorney, council. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion please to approve. Motion to approve. All right, motion from Councilman Gordon, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Carter. Okay, we have the motion and we have the second. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, on the city manager, we have a resolution in reference to authorize the mayor and city manager to make application for the Delta Regional Authorities State Economic Development Assistance Program, funded, aimed, and repairing and improving community infrastructure. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, is concerned for the health and public safety of its citizens and wishes to repair and rehabilitate the city's current deteriorating stormwater collection system. And whereas the city of Phoenix City wishes to apply for the Delta Regional Authorities State Economic Development Assistance Program for funding aimed at repairing and improving community infrastructure. And whereas the city would use the funds to improve its stormwater system by lining one thousand, four hundred and ninety-four linear feeds of irrigated metal pipes of various sizes in three locations in the city. And whereas the total value of the project is five hundred twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars, and the city would agree to provide a ten percent match of the total project value equating to fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize the filing of said application, including all understandings and assurances contained therein, and directs and authorize the mayor and city manager to act in connection with the application and to provide additional information that may be required. Passed approved and adopted this eighteenth day of June, two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion from Councilwoman Carter, and that's the second, Councilman Day. All right, we're good, Mrs.? All right, we're good. May I have a motion, and a second? Any comments or discussion?
Yeah, um, I noticed we, uh, it's a 10% match in this particular grant. Without the chance of getting this grant, we have pretty good chance of getting it.
Mr. Davis, this is money that we've never gone after before, so I, I can't, I don't want to answer that question. I'm hoping if we put together a good application, which is what we strive for, that we will have a chance to get this. But this is an additional plan through a different program through the Delta Regional Authority. If we put a 10% match with it, there's more likely to give us a grant. But it is just for infrastructure projects, so that's why we want to go in. We do have a lot of deteriorating irrigated metal pipes in some of our older subdivisions. So that's what we're aiming to try to get this money to go in and repair that. You can get right at $500,000, and we'll put in our match with it. But hopefully, if we can do this, technically, we'll be able to turn right back around and lose some additional irrigated metal pipes.
Let me ask you this thing. Any other city also applying for that same grant?
Yes, sir.
We are sure we're ready, girl.
Yes, we got a lot of things that we can line, yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all so very much. Thank you all, the department head, thanks to ones that came, uh, this evening. And, uh, before that, I would like to ask, uh, any comments or discussion on that? Is that all you had?
All right.
From the, no, I mean, it's voice. Don't start talking yet. We can talk about that. You talking about the reference to that resolution?
Okay, no, that's it.
That's it?
Okay.
All right, if it's not, at this time I'd like to call for the vote, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again, uh, department head and city council. Thank you, Jimmy, I thought, I, I, I don't know how I miss you, man. But I miss you.
Well, I only saw you a few hours ago.
And that's why I was looking at you there, I guess. Okay, at this time, council, anything you all want to add or take away? What, first is the city manager? Anything?
I want to, uh, mayor, just take this opportunity to thank, uh, the key Phoenix City beautiful, um, Incorporated, uh, organization for coming out. We acknowledged three recipients today at our 5 o'clock meeting. Mr. Steve Jordan received the, uh, yard of the month, uh, for his outstanding, um, uh, Property that he upheeds, so thank, um, Mr. Steve Jordan. And, um, the business that won the, uh, award was Taylor Funeral Home, One of the, you know, best business around, um, as far as keeping their property clean and safe. And, uh, the church that was, um, receiving the, that received the award Was New Central Missionary Baptist Church located on 24th Street. And so we just say, uh, thank you for doing the great work that you continue to do To make sure our city, uh, remain, uh, beautiful. And it's so, so important. We also just cited some references, um, if anyone want to, uh, reach out to other resources About helping clean up, uh, our community. So again, I just want to say, uh, thank you to those that came out for the meeting As well as, uh, the, and congratulations to the recipient that received yard of the month. We really, really appreciate that as a city.
Thank you, Mrs. Carter.
No church without a church. No Central Missionary Baptist Church.
Anything, Mrs. Davis?
Uh, yes, uh, mayor, um, I'd like to, to operate on this register a little bit here. Um, on, two centuries ago, when I, uh, at another church I came to on Fifth, uh, Fifth Street South there. When I got out of my car, I was very impressed, because that pool is well-used down there. I stopped again on this path, honey, got out of my car, and that pool is well-used down there. I was very proud of y'all, the folks down there having a good time and enjoying themselves. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Do you have anything? Mr. Hahn?
All right. Just short bits of things, Mr. Davis. I want to inform the council, uh, started granting some years ago, um, and called, Put together some easements with our department to work together. And I put engineering over it, because I think we have a lot to do with training and things more. I want to inform y'all that we've reached $53 million.
Wow.
So far. I want y'all to stand up and give yourselves a hand.
That's right. Wag your tail. Wag your tail.
Appreciation will come, that was the goal, and it creates such a bond with them being competitive. And I say that, we, they know I'm hitting the reset button, and where the new goal is $100 million. So the 47,000 dollars.
What is that, man?
But as we talked, I'm waiting on somebody, um, to grant to come through, uh, utilities, but it's waiting on me to get that announcement on John Sprigus. And he's, uh, he's jumped in there, and he's really making a difference in what we're doing. So we're waiting to get that information, and I'm glad, we're pretty close. We should be pretty close to that one, so it's a heck of a accomplishment, you know?
Very strong.
The ring is real, real strong, and it, it gives all of them a chance with the competitive nature To intertwine with one another and understand each other's plight And what they're, what working with the benefit that's it, you know? And you know?
I can't, man.
Y'all do a good job, and, and I can't say enough about, you know, the heck of an accomplishment. And I want to thank all y'all for, you know, respecting and working with each other like that. So thank you all very much.
Thank you all.
I think the council will allow another speech, because if, if I couldn't do my job, if I wasn't allowed to do the job That we didn't have the, you know, the room to maneuver to take care of things, so thank you all there.
Mayor, as others, as Mr. Hahn has stated already, and, uh, that can come back, that love that. The mayor read yesterday, you know, what the folks were saying about Phoenix City And, uh, stuff like that, proved them wrong.
Well, we, that's correct, and, uh, people can see what's going on in Phoenix City, they really can. Y'all is going to have a little bit of negativity, but that's fine, that makes us work a lot, a lot harder.
Negativity is even and difference.
They can see it, and really, you can see the difference.
Oh, yes.
So, like I say, keep on moving forward. Thank you all.
Thank you all so much. Listen, sometimes we got to wag your tail. Wag your tail, $53 million. The common denominator is, is about this community. We may not agree, we will disagree, but at the end of the day, at some point, we have to come together for the sake of the city.
And, and there, that's basically how it's 3.6, we're here, since we started, this year we've already reached 4 billion. And all I do is, I see is it's getting better and better, so it won't be, it won't be that long to accomplish this.
What is that, 4 billion? Thank you all so much for everything y'all do, and I just can't thank the council enough. Uh, we work very, very well together, because at the end of the day, it's about this community. No matter how we make this agreement or whatever, at the end of the day, the common denominator is the citizen of this community. Thank you all so much for what you all do, and, uh, to all our citizens, we bring this out every quarter, so you all can get more engaged. And I always say this, transparency is the best policy. And this is what this council always encourages everyone to do, and come and look and see. Transparency is the best, the best policy. So let's continue to show empathy. We thank the CTVB for bringing this to our citizens. And at this time, we do stand adjourned. Thank you.